Good morning.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Okay. Next time we get together, it will be daylight still.
I know, right?
God. Daylight savings time this weekend.
I wasn't quite sure what to do with myself with all this time between meetings.
At lunch or dinner. Run over to run over to someplace and get a grab, grab a quick hot bite or something. Hey, Rob.
Good.
Hello, Tim.
Hey, there.
Hello, Chief.
Thank you.
Hello, Bonnie.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Lynn, how are you doing?
So I'm just realizing that I missed Charlie's email this morning that had the tennis basketball court rehab bid award recommendation. So I just forwarded it to you.
Okay, well, you can pull it up too, right?
Yeah, I'll pull it up when we get to that. And then I'll also attach it to the agenda.
Okay, great.
After the pledge.
Do, am I the only one who does not have the option to have the Brady brunch experience this evening? I don't have, you know, the option to
Well, what, right now, I'm sharing my screen because the flags are up for the pledge.
Yes, okay, so that's
You'll be good.
Got it. Good enough. Thank you.
Actually, it's a visual test. See if you Still need Andrew.
We have two minutes left anyway.
Oh, Andrew's here. There he is. Hello, Andrew.
So I knew they, I'd heard they'd done both.
Okay, I think we're all here. Good evening. It is Monday, March the 8th at 6:30 PM, and we're here for the monthly meeting of the mayor and city council meeting. Invite you all to please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant for which it stands, one nation indivisible Thank you very much. Few announcements before we get started. And first of all, the vaccinations are continuing around Sussex County. We're still working through the 1B category. I know there are many lists around and that, and we are now getting Johnson and Johnson product as well into the state. So I encourage you to continue to try and get your vaccination through pharmacy or community center or wherever you can. I know BB has a list as well. They are working through some of those lists rather nicely, but there still is a big backlog. So I encourage you to try and get vaccinated if you can. Also, I've note, I think it's important to note that our hospitality ambassadors who were so helpful to us in our summer are working with tourists and other people coming downtown during this pandemic. They're working in our community centers, helping people bear their way through the vaccination process. It's really nice to have this group of people who have been so generous with their time and energy. I would encourage you to continue wearing your mask and washing your hands and practice social distancing, especially now that the weather is getting warmer and we're all beginning to move around a little bit more. While we're talking about health, we will have a board of health meeting by Zoom on Wednesday at 1 o'clock. The link is on the city's website. If you're interested in attending, Dr. Tam and Dr. Cowan and probably Dr. Chasoff will be there to offer some additional information about from BB's perspective, how we're managing the pandemic is going. Remind you also that this coming weekend, we go to daylight savings time. So we spring forward and lose an hour of sleep, maybe. Anyway. We're, we're, we've moved through five of our six scheduled budget meetings, and we will have our sixth meeting on Friday of this week at 1 o'clock. And we expect to adopt the budget on Monday at 6:00 PM. That's next Monday, the 15th. Spring has begun to arrive between now and the next time we meet, the tulip festival will have happened. So I think the town should be ablaze with a lot of color. I think Lewis and Bloom, I thank them for their efforts to do that program. I think they've indicated that they have planted more than 24,000 tulips this season, so it might be, should be quite colorful. And then I would also note that we will be having an election or we're scheduled to have an election the second Saturday in May. At this point, we have only two candidates filed. Councilperson Morgan is one of them. And the other one is a Carolyn Jones, but if anyone's interested, they can still file until the first of April. And then that is all the announcements I have, except to advise you that item H2 relating to the 99 year lease for the children's beach house will be deleted from tonight's schedule. It is not ready for our consideration yet. Are there any announcements or additions from the table? Okay.
Here we go.
National Women's.
Oh, yes.
I think today's National Women's Day.
Thank you very much.
Today is?
Today is. Thanks, Bonnie. I appreciate you reminding us.
That was Andrew.
I know.
Every day is National Women's Day, right?
Anyway, thank you. So with that, if there's nothing further, then I would move to item E1, which is presentation of possible election on the appointment of a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. You'll recall over the last couple of months, we've been discussing, and we have discussed over the last several years, the possibility of adding a beach commissioner for, to our Parks and Rec Commission. And last month, we took action to expand our Parks and Rec Commission to allow for the appointment of two more commissioners. And this evening, I would ask council's consideration of the appointment of a beach commissioner to who would be primarily representing of the beach interest. And I would ask your consideration of approving Kay Carnahan. Kay has stepped forward and asked, expressed an interest. She's a regular beach user, although she lives on the town side. And she's very, has, has been working with our lifeguards in sort of an ad hoc way over the last couple of years to help improve their, their program over there. So I think Kay will be an excellent addition as a new commissioner to our Parks and Rec Commission. Did I have a motion to regarding Kay's appointment?
Well, it being International Women's Day, I will appoint another woman or nominate and move the nomination of another woman, Kay Carnahan, to this position.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there a second? Thanks. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Any opposition? Thank you very much. And Kay will thank you. I know you're on the call. So thank you very much for your willingness to step up and look forward to having you become an active member of the commission. Not that you haven't always been a proponent of the beach, but now you have a different role. And so then the second item on the agenda is item E2 is a presentation of possible action of the appointment of a chair for the joint site development ad hoc review committee. I do not have a person for this. Janelle, do you have someone for this?
So this would be a member of council, and they would then chair the joint at the joint site development ad hoc review committee, which will consist of three planning commission members and three H Park members.
Okay.
This is a non-voting chair position.
This is, this is something we approved in the past as creating this commission.
Correct.
Okay, Bonnie.
I, at this point, I second it. I second it.
I don't know that I'll still be on council when, when this meets.
So yeah, I'm going to ask Andrew if he'd be willing to do that.
Oh, my gosh. Can you all put, can you put a little meat on the bone on what the purpose of this is?
So the purpose of the joint site development ad hack review committee is to review site development plans. The process has changed. So now what it does is instead of going through the planning commission historic preservation or the old architectural review committee and then council, it just goes to this group. They will review the application and then forward it to mayor and council for the final decision on the site plan.
It's non, it's non-voting?
The, the chair is non-voting.
Okay.
Just one thing is, is the, the reason that we're doing this is because that's the way that we decided to work when we created H Park, the way to create to, to deal with the overlapping jurisdictions of zoning and, and H Park. But is, is this specifically for the proposed middle school?
The proposed middle school, and there are several other site development plans that have, that are coming forward.
That's why I'm not sure I might be appropriate for this because frankly, I'm going to recuse myself in the upcoming
Understand.
Yeah, because of, my brother is the architect, so I'm actually not going to take any voting action on that. So I don't know if it's appropriate for me to be
Got it.
This committee.
Okay. Does anyone want to volunteer for this position? Bonnie, I think, given you're not going to be seeking reelection, I don't think it would be practical for you to take that on. But Rob or Tim?
Ted, I was never a fan of this committee. You may recall, it was, as Bonnie says, to deal with overlapping jurisdictions and and I, I would probably not be the best person.
I, I will say this, if, if another councilperson needs to step up and unload some things from their plate on to me to trade, I, I would be open to do that, to take some of the sort of workload, as it were.
Is this an appointment that needs to be made this month? Or could we do it next month? Or can we even add it to an agenda that for an upcoming B that we will have yet this month?
Um, I believe you could add it to an agenda upcoming, but it is needs, decision needs to be made quickly because we do have an application.
Okay.
And we'll have another application relatively shortly. So we would like to keep the applications moving.
I think we're going to have another meeting next week. Is that right, Anne Marie?
Next Monday at 6:00, and we have two items. We have 30 minutes for that meeting, so.
Don't we have, are we also thinking about a meeting on Tuesday?
What's Tuesday?
What do we think?
Is that
Can I, can I suggest thing? I mean, if Tim wants to do this, that's great, but this will be the first time that this joint meeting, this joint committee meets.
Right.
I don't think it would be inappropriate for the mayor to be the chair the first time. Okay. I'm just throwing that out there. Again, if Tim wants to do it, that's great. I'm just, I don't
I was looking for, I was actually looking forward to doing some horse trading with Andrew and do a big offload.
All right, I can if you, if it's agreeable with all of you, I will take on the responsibility initially, and then we'll talk further about how we want to reassign this position. Does that work?
What are you gonna, what are you gonna give to Andrew?
Yeah.
Continue their horse trading off, off, off.
Let me just ask you before we move on, is there a date set up for this next, for the first meeting? A date and time?
No, we're still working on getting appointees committed, appointees identified for this. So H Park tomorrow will be identifying their members hopefully, and then next week, the planning commission will be identifying their members. So we can get everybody together so we can start getting dates to look at for a potential meeting date.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, so we're Agreeable with the four of you. I'll take it on initially and we'll go from there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you need to vote on that, Ted?
I think we have a common consensus, but let's get a vote on it.
Bonnie. I make caution that Ted serve as the inaugural chair to the joint site development ad hoc review committee.
And I'll second, but Ted, just to clarify, is this just to kick off the thing and then you'll pass it, pass this one on to somebody else? Is that
I think what we'll do is we'll talk about it off, you know, amongst ourselves and figure out who would best, who's best to take this on. Okay? Sure. Best equipped to take it on. All right. And then maybe as Andrew and Tim were talking about horse trading, maybe there and Andrew's situation is such that with his brother being an architect for the first project, I can certainly understand his hesitancy in taking it on. So. But anyway, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Also noted in the chat, Kate Car had sent a note saying, thank you. She can't wait to get started. So then moving on then to item F, which is the consent agenda, we have the mayor city council meeting minutes from January 11th, 21. Also, the minute meeting, the meeting minutes from February 8th, 2021, the Board of Public Work meeting minutes from December 9th of 20, January 27th of 21, financial activity reports, the police activity reports, and the fire department activity report. Are there any of those items that anyone would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
Mayor, there isn't, but I would like to ask the chief a question. Not related directly to his report, but generally about the police.
Can we approve the consent agenda? And then we can ask the chief afterwards. It's our work.
That works well.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Bonnie.
Second.
Yeah, I think Bonnie did. Thank you. As we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, chief, Rob has a question for you.
Chief, the, the question was in the, in the email that you forwarded the reports to us, and thank you for it. You said our COVID restrictions have been lifted as far as police activity, so the future reports will reflect the change. Could you elaborate on that? I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
Well, activity has, can you hear me fine?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so a conscious effort, activity has been restricted as far as a non-emergency interactions, non-public safety interactions. We've, we've lifted those restrictions and I simply made the comment to, to reflect that you'll see a dramatic increase in in activity across all sectors of our, our business. in activity across all sectors of our business.
Whose restrictions were those? Were those restrictions that you yourself adopted, chief? And and that was so that your officers wouldn't come in close contact with and spread the virus.
We thought it was best not to have, you know, unnecessary contact with the public and I think as a way to protect our officers and as well as to protect the public from any transmission possibilities.
Have your officers been vaccinated? And the others would rather not? And are they going to be having the same contact unrestricted as the others?
That is the plan. The state just came out with the second round of law enforcement specific vaccinations, which I put out. I have not received any responses yet, but the deadline is not up.
Do you anticipate putting in place any, any additional precautions for the four who declined to be vaccinated? Thank you.
All of our officers are still wearing masks and everything and and other things, correct? All protective gear?
Yep, yep, all those efforts are still ongoing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief before we move on?
All right. I don't have a question for the chief, but I have a question for the fire department. Is it appropriate for me to raise that now?
Raise it, sir.
Okay, this is in response to, in reflection on the discussion that we had last month associated with the building code, proposed building code adoption of a updated building code. And my question is, I'd like to learn from the police department, from the fire department, what their response time is for fires, fire emergencies.
Okay, we'll have, there's no one representing the fire department here, but we.
I understand, but if we could do that and include that next month's report, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, we'll ask.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add to something there? I mean, it'd be also be, it's an interesting question and I'd be curious about the emergency medical response times as well.
Right.
Okay.
I think actually both are very important numbers to at least have some ballpark around. Clearly depends on the distance and weather and traffic and other everything else, but we can get an average.
Yeah, I suspect that the ambulance is faster because they have staff right at the station.
Right, right. And I'll even modify my initial ask and that would be, it would be very helpful if they could include seasonal averages. I, this past year has been very strange, I know because of COVID. But if they have historical information from two years ago, that would be very helpful for us.
Provide, okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure. All right, Anne Marie, the floor is yours. City manager's report.
All right, I almost forgot to unmute. All right, so we are, we now have two capital construction projects underway that have been underway for a while, face twenty four, which is Coleman Avenue and west, or I'm sorry, East Fourth Street. So the water main work is being completed. And then when that's done, the roads will be paved. We're looking at, I think, late March, early April for completion. They are also, if you've been out on King's Highway, I'm sure you've noticed that they're working on the ADA accessible curb ramps at Manila, at Manila and Kings and Adams and Kings. And there will be crosswalks installed in these locations as well. The BPW is working on the water main replacement on Pilot Town Road that will go through late spring and then they will come back in the fall to resurface the road. And as we'll discuss later this evening, we had a bid opening for the rehabilitation at the tennis courts and basketball court at Canalfront Park. We received only one bid. We have worked with GMB. We went to look at the surfacing of some ports in Ocean City. Because one of the bid alternates that we had was a rubberized surface that Charlie can explain when we get to that. So that that recommendation is on this evening's agenda and we look to this project moving forward in the next, well, if we use that bit alternate, it would be in probably early June. You know, as it relates to the pandemic, I think the mayor, the mayor's covered this. We continue to meet every couple of weeks with the the governor's office and his staff along with the other mayors across the state. And the board of health continues to meet, you know, while we're waiting for the vaccine to be fully deployed. You know, we're still recommending, even if you're vaccinated, wear your mask, wash your hands and maintain distance. We are, again, as the mayor said, gearing up for the municipal election. So the filing window for candidates opened up on March first and will close at four thirty on April first. So currently we have two candidates have filed. The election, if if we end up with more than two candidates filing, the election will be on Saturday, May eighth. We have information about filing for candidacy and registering to vote on the city's website. And we also have on this evening's agenda, setting a date for city hall to be open on a Saturday to take voter registrations. We've got a number of personnel things going on. We're nearing the, nearing the conclusion of the hiring process with three potential police officers, so you won't see them on the street just yet because there, we have candidates that need to go to the police academy. We've begun recruitment for our seasonal positions and maintenance, parking enforcement and our lifeguards. Steve Borrow was promoted to the assistant building official position that we had vacant. And we have been recruiting for candidates to fill the code enforcement officer vacancy created by this promotion. The the window for application closed on February twenty sixth and now the staff is in the process of reviewing application. The Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee along with our planner, Janelle Cornwell, worked on revisions to the source water protection overlay requirements to make the ordinance less cumbersome for property owners. The planning commission will discuss this draft ordinance at their special meeting this Thursday, March eleventh at six o'clock. So we have received a number of calls from contractors, property owners and others about the the requirements of the ordinance and when we get inquiries, I'm encouraging people to participate in the public process. Once the planning commission makes a recommendation, that will come to mayor and council to set a public hearing and then after a public hearing, you all will act on it. As the mayor mentioned, that we are in budget season, so we have our final budget markup session scheduled this coming Friday. And then on Monday evening next week, mayor and council will meet at six o'clock to adopt the budget. Let's see, I'm just looking. On February tenth, GMB staff and I met via Zoom with Matt Carter from the University of Delaware's T-Square Center about traffic patterns on Monroe Avenue as we prepare for reconstruction of the street. We did talk about this a little bit at the Capitol Projects Meeting on Friday. So we discussed potential for one-way traffic, addition of sidewalks and after Friday's meeting, it looks like we will not be working. That that will not, the reconstruction will not happen in the short term because we know that there's likely to be construction traffic, but because there's going to be a lengthy public process on this, we may you know, still begin that process this year. The Go Fourth Committee did meet in February to discuss July fourth fireworks. We don't know at this point you know, what what the situation will be and obviously we're following the the guidance and directives from the state. I've met a couple of times with the team from Cape Pen Lope and School District and their consultants on the new middle school that was mentioned earlier that will be constructed at the site of the current Shields Elementary School, so that that plan will be forthcoming. And also I met with Host Compliance, which is the company that we're engaged with to identify unlicensed short-term rental properties. And we're getting that underway, so they are going to be meeting with Chelsea, our permit and licensing specialist and getting her acclimated to using the system so that we can start to to take, you know, action to contact property owners who need to get licenses.
Any questions for Anne Marie? Anne Marie, thank you very much. It's been a busy month, I know.
Always a busy month.
Yeah, every month is busy. I think we can accept Anne Marie's report by common consensus. Then moving on to item H1, is presentation possible action or recommendation from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to replace the double ballers at road crossings on the Georgetown Lewis Trail with single ballers. We've talked about this and we had it on the agenda last month. We took no action because we were missing cost estimates. And I think Anne Marie has been able to get some cost estimates from Del Dot in the interim. But I, we did have these double ballards where we were put in place as a request of the city to, in an attempt to make sure that we didn't have joyriding of vehicles and ATVs on the trails, which we did note right after the trails opened. This request is a request to take those out and put in a single ballard, which would be centered on the trail. And the thought was it would improve traffic flow. However, I think Anne Marie, you want to bring us up to date on the costs? You got your, you're muted.
I guess it would help unmute, right? So there were a couple of options. I did go out and visit the area between, really right around the trailhead, so we were between Monroe and and Adams with Del Dot, both the bicycle pedestrian folks and the somebody from the railroad section. So we looked at it. I did update the report that's in your packet based on that. Talks a little bit about the trail design and, you know, that they gave me a kind of off-the-cuff estimate of fifteen hundred dollars per location. But then I got something from the person with the railroad section over the weekend. And what he had two options. One, they called the low-cost option and that would be twenty, estimated at twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars and this would consist of removing the existing ballards, grinding off the metal lip where the sleeve meets the ground and and fill the existing sleeve with concrete, putting a new yellow baller in the center at each location. That the low-cost solution was estimated at twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And then they did mention that it wouldn't be as aesthetically pleasing and that there could be future ADA issues if the if the patch falls over time. And then the option two, the traditional repair, which is more costly, is estimated at forty-eight thousand dollars and that would consist of saw cutting out a section of the trail where the ballards are to remove the ballards and then patching it and putting the single ballard in the center and that would be more aesthetically pleasing and would minimize any ADA concerns, but again, it's almost twice the anticipated cost. The way that they just, the way they explained it to me, they said that we could enter into a contract with Del Dot's railroad section and they would bid it and and do the work and we would pay.
So they would project manage it in effect?
Yes.
However, the cost would be borne by us. Is that right?
Yes, they did not offer.
And did they, would we be paying and compensating them for their project management fees as well?
No, we, no, just for the contract cost.
Just the contract cost. Thank you. Any discussion at the table?
I would just say, let's, as we, let's, well, as we discuss this, let's separate the two things in terms of costs versus whether safety-wise it's a good idea, because we could always go back to this bicycle committee and see if the weather's realistic and we might be able to get a grant, et cetera, and maybe get some further action there, but let's, let's maybe have the discussion whether we think it's a good idea period around this simple fact that you brought up, mayor, which is the the safety.
One thing that was discussed when I was out on site with Del Dot was that they would expect that where people are currently cyclists are currently slowing as they approach the intersections that, you know, that, that removing the double baller could negate that slowing effect.
Yeah. I think Andrew's suggestion is excellent, actually, to just, to have some discussion about this, if that was, I think that's a good idea. And I guess the other thing is, is it an all or nothing proposition? Are there areas that we can say, well, these we feel are, we should just leave as is or double and these are single or is the proposition an all or nothing thing, you know?
Yeah. Initially, it was, we put them, we asked Del Dot to put them in and they did put them in because we had, we actually had people driving ATVs and small vehicles on the trail. I think that has stopped partially because we've gotten some plantings or some grass growing on either side, so there's a little, there's a little discouragement there, but I think there's, there are some issues with where you have major crossings on state roads like Savannah and and King's Highway. Anything you could do to slow traffic down in those areas actually probably prevents someone from having a serious injury. Perhaps some of the others, maybe they could be, they could be changed, but I know it does have a calming effect on traffic, on bike traffic. And keep in mind, we also have the state legislature, which is entertaining the sunsetting of requiring bicyclists to stop. I don't know where that is going to end up yet.
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, Ted, because in the agenda item report that was included with our documentation for this meeting, it describes change, suggests that we change the stop signs that are presently on the path to yield signs. And our letter that we sent to the state last, to the legislature, unless I'm mistaken, we spoke, we wrote, we petitioned them to keep stop signs, you know, that we want people to stop at those crossings. So I think we need to true up what we said in our letter and what this, you know, this suggestion.
Well, let me clarify that. The suggestion was that we may want to change the stop signs at Schley, Jefferson, Monroe and Adams, which are low-volume streets to to yield signs. Thinking with the idea being that when you have a yield sign at these lower volume locations, the stop sign would have more meaning when you get to King's Highway or Savannah.
That's an interesting concept. What I would remind us all is that we are seeing an uptick in traffic on Monroe where the bike path does cross that's and it's going to, we have reasons to believe that use is going to grow. And with Adams, it's with the, when the library does open up, that is a fairly busy intersection. So I would, I would encourage us to keep the stop signs at those two locations at least.
Anna, you want to comment?
Yeah. One of the things that I found very interesting in Anne Marie's report, which I was not aware of, is that the trail is the Georgetown Lewis Trail, particularly inside the city limits, is designed for ten miles an hour.
Yeah.
And needless to say, I think we've all observed that many bicyclists go considerably in excess of 10 miles an hour. And so if people were going 10 miles an hour, as for the, which is the design speed, I think this whole problem would sort of fade away. Now, I'm not suggesting that people, if they're on an open trail, should go 10 miles an hour, obviously, but, but I think it's an important sort of factor in all of this. I, just to Ted's point, I've seen cars on the trail. So I don't think that the, that the the utility of having the double ballers to prevent that has gone away. I actually think it's still there. But finally, and most importantly, as Andrew brought up, that the question is about safety on the trails. The trails are are heavily used. They're going to be more heavily used. We're going to have more traffic, period. Tim is exactly right about Monroe in particular, but certainly the larger, the, the larger roads. So I, I guess I, I just haven't seen anything yet that convinces me. I understand it's an inconvenience for bicyclists who want to go. First of all, why would you want to pass right before you go into an intersection? I mean, that's kind of my number one practical concern. That's exactly when you shouldn't be passing because you can't see the cars. So I guess I, I understand, I, I get that it's inconvenient for, for some bikes, bicyclists sometimes. But to me, the, what we have to look at is the, the busy times and is this enhancing the safety of bicyclists and motorists at these intersections? And I think if the double ballards slow people down, I frankly think that's a good thing. So that's kind of my take on it. And, you know, obviously, there's the expense. I, if we grind down a metal lip, it, it's eventually going to sink. So that's going to be a problem for ADA and safety and bicycle tires and all sorts of things. So $50,000 to do something that reduces safety just doesn't strike me as a good bargain.
Rob, did you want to comment?
Well, it's, uh, obviously, there, there's arguments on both sides, and there are respectable arguments on both sides. I think inexperienced cyclists are more likely either to stop at a double ballard or to hit one. An experienced cyclist is not likely to have a problem getting through them. And yet it's an annoyance because he might have to stop for somebody else coming the other way. So I'm really hoping that Tim and Andrew, as the council representatives on the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, will, will tell us what to do because it's, it's a it's a vexed question. The, the cost that Anne Marie found, what is, what are staggering?
Yeah.
You know, one thing that I would like to, I'm wondering, Anne Marie, at the time that you met with the representatives from the train people and also the Delta, I think you said, is that right?
Well, it's Del Dot's Bicycle and Pedestrian Program and their railroad division.
Thank you, thank you. Did, are, do they offer any kind of evaluation? Maybe, maybe in person when you met with them, or do they have the resources on staff where they might be able to do an evaluation of our crossings now to make suggestions that we could do to improve the, the safety and, and address the, the baller thing?
I mean, it, they didn't, they hadn't done any serious evaluation. They, they did note that where they have trail counters on the Georgetown Lewis Trail, the volumes are very high, especially during the summer.
Right.
And, um, you know, that, that changing it to a single ballard would likely increase the, the speed at the intersections or at the, the road crossings. So, I mean, that's kind of their, their professional judgment. I don't know. I mean, if we want them to do a specific study, I think that we would need to give them a scope of what we were requesting, and we'd have to see if they have the resources to do it.
Okay. Well, one of the other things I was wondering about is, I know one of the ideas, if we were to make the modification and put the single ballards in, is that they would be a bright yellow. I believe I remember that correctly. Andrew, am I right about that with, from the committee meetings? And what I'm wondering is if, if yellow is, is used to evoke caution and I'm wondering if we could not paint the existing ballers that we have in the field, because I recall some of them are pressure-treated wood. And they're that natural color. And I'm wondering if we might use some good old paint to make them more pronounced and possibly increase the safety, not only for bikers, but as an obstruction.
Tim, I think if you look at those, those six-by-six, uh, uh, salt-treated lumber that's being used currently as ballards, they have yellow and black stripes on the upper foot or so. So there's, there is some kind of, already some visual queuing going on.
That's right.
Certainly paint the whole post, but there, they already have done some of that to try and call attention to it.
Yes, I agree. And, and, but you, in that page, well, I don't know if you're looking at paper copies or on screen, but there's a photo of the junk, the, the trail at Gil's Neck Road, and you can see the ballards in, in a shadow. And they're quite, they're pretty dark. And maybe painted yellow, they would be more pronounced. It's just an idea I'm throwing out. That's all. Something that we might be able to do.
Well, to, to, to Rob's point to begin with, the, the committee, I, I serve on the committee. They've asked us to bring it forward, so I'm going to make a motion that we vote to approve this. And I'll look for a second. And if we don't get one, I understand.
Okay. Here we have a motion from Andrew. Is there a second to that motion? Ask again, is there a second to that motion? Okay. Hearing none, your motion dies, Andrew. Thank you. Is there another motion that someone would like to bring forward?
Let's see.
Do we need another motion?
You can let it die. We can just die, or the whole thing can die. I'm just asking if there was any other motion that anybody wanted to bring forward.
We just dealt with it, really.
All right. Well, the motion died, but I didn't know if somebody wanted it. Okay. All right. So then, then we will not take this any further, at this point. Okay. Then we can move then on to, we're deleting item H2. We can move on to item H3, which is discussion, possible action of the parking lot license agreement with M&amp;T Bank. I think as everyone knows, certainly at the table, and many people on the call or on the meeting tonight, this has been a discussion that's been going on for approximately two years regarding creating a license agreement with M&amp;T or the city to use that parking lot as for city parking with a limited number of spaces during the banking hours and then using the entire lot minus four spaces that are going to be dedicated to the Hotel Rodney when the bank is not operational. We've had a lot of discussion back and forth with M&amp;T on this. They, the license agreement you've had, we talked about it last month. And we talked about the costs associated with this. And the cost of developing this is going to be shared between M&amp;T and, and the city. And with contribution from Hotel Rodney, although by redesigning it and not repositioning the dumpsters, the Hotel Rodney's contribution will be significantly reduced. The total cost of doing this is, including the, the station meter, is approximately, with, with the contribution from the bank, is approximately $18,000 to $20,000. And we talked about this at, at the meeting, at the budget meeting on Friday. This is a two-year contract with the city not making any payment to the bank for the use of the lot during the first year and a 20% contribution based on proceeds in the second year. Is estimated that we will recover the full cost of this in the two years of operation. Is there any discussion?
It seems like a good idea.
I think this, we've heard from the, the business owners that this this is an area that I think could generate better parking for them. It's right in the middle of town. It's immediately adjacent to the existing city lot, which has 19 spaces. I think actually with this lot and improved signage and the, and the existing lot, we can actually see a lot more use being made of these two lots, therefore have an opportunity to realize a, a step up in, in revenue. Is there a motion regarding this license agreement?
I will move that we approve it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bonnie. We have a motion and a second to move forward with the license agreement as presented. All in favor?
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Hey.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we've made an accommodation in the plan for what looks like is identified as four hoop bike racks.
That came off the agreement. The bank was not.
So they've now been, I thought I heard that at one of the meetings. So that's not included, right?
That is not included. The bank would not, would not, would not accept that agreement.
That's fine. Thank you for that clarification. Then I will make a statement. My statement is, I, I would like to see us increase the number of bike racks, accommodations for bikes, not in this parking lot. I understand that can be done. But I'm aware of the fact that the city does have a parking lot, I believe it's on the adjacent lot, adjacent just to the south. And I, I know Bonnie has spoken in the past about how cluttered the Mary Vessels Park area is due to bikes, and we have seen bikes, you know, parked in various places along Second Street. I would just like to see us redouble our effort to increase the number of bike racks in that Second Street general area. And if we can take a parking space from the adjacent lot and put a rack or two in there, I think that'd be very helpful.
We can consider it. That is not part of what's being planned right now, but we could certainly go back.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second to approve this license agreement. All in favor?
I just have a question. It's, uh, this, we, we also approved, once we approved this, then Charlie goes forward with this?
Yes. Oh, we have to, well, they, the bank has to sign it. M&amp;T has to sign it. We have to sign it. The bank has to sign it, then we can go forward.
And we have a fixed cost on the, the modifications that we're, we're good for, right?
We don't have a fixed cost. We have an estimate. I mean, we have a very good idea of what, what the cost will be, but we do, we don't have a fixed cost at this point.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Or you, or did you have more questions, Anne?
I, I vote yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. We will, we can look at other additional bike racks. I think one of the other things is that we talked about last month was the idea of additional signage to identify where bike racks are. Some of our bike racks are not utilized as much as they could, particularly the one right across, right at the bridge.
Right, right.
All right, thank you. So then we can move on to item H4, which is discussion and possible action of the placement of the swing bridge on a city parcel at the end of American Legion Road. That's Sussex County map 335-9.00-22.00. If you'll recall, Del Dot has been working with the city regarding what to do with the bridge, and they have agreed to, to move it at their expense and do, surround it with a fence and the
Want to speak real Italian from your first lesson? Sign up for your free lifetime account at ItalianPod101.com.
Sorry about that. Are you learning Italian, Rob?
Bueno, bueno.
Boy, I'm glad it was just about Italian.
Appreciate the levity. Thank you. The group, the, the group from Fort Miles and the group that were proposing the, the railroad cars at the at the, at the cross, at the Rollins Center have agreed that they are going to take on the responsibility of managing and maintaining this swing bridge once it is placed by Del Dot. The question here is, do we have an agreement yet with, with the group that's going to be maintaining it? And Glenn, I know you, you've had some initial conversation with them. Where are we with that? Do we have anything yet?
Yeah, there is, there is no maintenance agreement. At this point, I think we need to have some form of maintenance agreement. We've not got one in place. We haven't drafted one at this point. So you might be able to take action tonight on whether you agree with this placement, subject to a maintenance agreement being worked out that it's, that's acceptable to both, both parties. But beyond that, there's, there's nothing concrete in place yet.
I think we've already taken that action, Glenn, to, to approve the placement. We've already approved the placement. So what we need to do is get the contract with the, with the group. And Del Dot would like to see that done. So if we could work on that over the next month, yeah, that would be very helpful.
Will do. Sorry, I haven't anything yet.
No problem. Thank you. So that, we, Anne Marie, we could put that on next month's agenda, I would assume. Okay, thank you. Moving then on to item H5, is presentation possible? Action on rewarding a contract for the rehabilitation of the Canalfront Park tennis and basketball courts based on the bids received. And this, Anne Marie, you want to bring up your share screen, and we'll take a look at what you got.
I'm trying to find it on my many screens.
The, it might be easier just to, for you to summarize what we got, because the bid documented itself is not all that clear.
So I'm going to actually bring Charlie up because he can
Good.
All right. Mr. O'Donnell, you are on.
Charlie, we got you.
There he is.
Yeah.
Buongiorno, buongiorno.
Touche.
Sorry, Rob.
He deserved it.
So I wanted to bring GMB's recommendation of award to council tonight for the tennis court rehabilitation project, which we've discussed a few times, and I think everybody's aware of what's going on. We did open bids on Tuesday, February the 2nd. And we had set it up with a base bid and two bid alternates. We only received one bid from American Tennis Corporation, which is fine because they've been doing the existing tennis court maintenance for decades now. So we're familiar with them. And they're a very reputable contractor when it comes to this kind of work. Which, this kind of work is, this, by the way, it's a little difficult to find contractors. It's not like you're going to work with the Georgian Lynch's or JJ IDs or T.O.s on this kind of a project. So we did get one bid from ATC Corp. We did set it up with the base bid and two bid alternates. On the base bid, ATC Corporation came in at $143,960. And if you recall, the base bid includes milling the existing asphalt surface across both the tennis court and the basketball courts, crack sealing and putting glass mesh fabric across the entire square footage of both the tennis courts and the basketball court, and then overlaying with two inches of asphalt before color coding then with the, with the appropriate colors and lines on the course themselves. That's what the base bid was, along with several other things like fence fabric, fence post replacement, basketball pole replacement, basketball backboard replacement, and some windscreen. So that was all part of the base bid at $143,960. Our first bid alternate was to use the Premier, what's known as the Premier Tennis Court System, which is a Our first bid alternate was to use the Premier, what's known as the Premier Tennis Court System, which is a polyurethane resilient surface, um, with a, an acrylic wearing surface color coating on top of it. Um, and that would be just in lieu of the asphalt overlay and the, and the mesh fabric. So instead of putting the mesh fabric in the two inch overlay, we'd just be putting the resilient surface Premier Tennis Court System. That bid came in at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty. That was for bid alternate number one. We also had a bid alternate number two, which removed the replacement of the fence posts. Um, and we feel like, GMB feels like he can utilize the existing fence posts and this, and just replace the, um, the fab, the fencing fabric itself, the wire mesh part of it. Um, and that resulted in a savings of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So we applied that to the base bid amount with the asphalt overlay and that bid alternate number two came in at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. We also have since talked, um, with ATC about applying that fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollar, fence post savings to the Premier Court System and they will apply the exact same amount, amount because it's exactly the same work excluded from the project. So that would bring the Premier System, which was bid alternate number one, down from a hundred and fifty-eight thousand to a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. So I know those are a lot of numbers, but at the end of the day, after, um, as Emery mentioned, taking field trips several times to Ocean City, um, along with the, um, twenty-five year warranty of the Premier System. Uh, GMB is gonna recommend that you do go with the Premier System, um, in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And with that, I can answer any questions. I know one question that came up on Friday at the, at the, uh, Capital Project Budget Meeting was what would be the, um, maintenance costs? And we did contact ATC, which, like I said, they've been doing your maintenance on your existing court. And they were, um, they noted that it would be thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars to maintain the courts every five years, which would be exactly the same whether you go with the, Premier System or the Asphalt Overlay System.
So they're estimating that every, would only need a fi- a treatment every five years? Is that what you're saying or is that?
Yeah, and, and if you do that, if you follow that schedule with the five-year treatment, you have a twenty-five-year warranty on the, on the Premier System.
And remind, and remind me, Ellen Lorraine, I think our number is we have a seventy-three thousand dollar grant for this work. Is that's right?
Yes, that is correct. It's a matching grant.
Okay.
And, and just to, um, what, one thing that, that Janet did is she looked back and when the courts were resurfaced back in two thousand and fifteen, it was sixteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. So, and that's consistent. So that's actually a little more than what Charlie mentioned for the color coding.
That thirteen K's built in every five years? So in twenty years, we're not gonna be paying more than a thirteen K?
Um, no, it's not. It's not part of our bid.
I mean, in terms of their service agreements for the warranty. Are you just an estimate also? The thirteen K an estimate or is that built into the?
It is an estimate.
Uh, could escalate.
It could have escalated. Yeah, yeah.
We, we might wanna negotiate on that one, Andrew.
Because right now that still puts you at sixty, that still puts you at sixty-five K for, for maintenance.
Yeah. Are we actually?
Over a twenty-five year period.
Great. Right now, we're, we're paying every five years for the maintenance and that does not prevent cracking. And with this surface, i- if there's any cracking, um, if it, if it starts to come up, that's all covered under the warranty.
Right.
So I think that, that's one of the, the benefits is that we're not going to, you know, put a hundred forty thousand dollars into the courts only to have cracks come back up.
Uh, Emery, uh, help me out with, I have two questions for you. Uh, what, uh, what, what are our costs right now for maintaining the, the, the courts? And I, do I understand correctly that they are coming annually and servicing the courts, but it's a five-year term? No, they only. No?
No.
Oh.
So, so right now, um, the last time we had the, the courts ma- maintained, it was twenty fifteen. So that was six years ago and the cost was sixteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. So we can expect, um, a- and then there, there was an additional fourteen hundred forty-five dollars for the completion of pickleball lines, but that's not a recurring cost. So that, that sixteen thousand, five hundred is what you would normally expect to pay on a, a five-year rotation.
I see. And what is the lifespan of courts of this rubberized, uh, or the premier surface? Does anyone know? Charlie?
Well, it has a twenty-five year warranty. So.
Right.
It's more.
Twenty-six years.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, I think as long as you keep maintaining it, it will, it could last a really, really long time. You might have to repair certain sections of it because it comes in six foot wide strips. So, um, if you, if for some reason there's some wear and tear that just won't go away with the maintenance, then we could re- replace just portions of it.
Okay.
Charlie, I've got a couple of questions, but there's a, a couple of questions in chat too.
I was gonna get to that, uh, from Michael Safina. There is the chat is, is a timeframe for the tennis court repairs known yet? And would the work impact access to the parking areas of the park, ball fields, LHS and overfalls? Can you talk about the timeline for the work?
Well, if we go with the Premier System, it has to be done when it's at least seventy-eight to eighty degrees.
So that's.
Yeah, so that would be June at the earliest. So, but it doesn't take long to get it down either. It's a quicker process than the milling and overlaying.
Is it a week or two weeks or?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but it wouldn't obstruct access to the other things that use that location.
I mean, I, I'd have to talk to the contractor, but I imagine that they're gonna need a small staging area, but I was thinking if they need anything at all, it would be perhaps in the Canalfront Park. Take a corner of the Canalfront Park parking lot. Something like that.
Okay.
So as to not to upset the other side, which is so busy with people coming in and going out.
If it's going on in, if it's going on in June, we got little league to contend with.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
We need to be careful we don't disrupt that.
And Charlie, I think you described, uh, the, the play of a ball on this surface is kind of between a hard court and a clay court.
Yeah, I think it's. I think it's closer to a hard court, but it's a slightly different bounce than a, than a hard court. And it's got a tiny bit of cushion. It's not like you're on, you know, uh, it's not like a Nerf ball or anything like that. But it's got a little cushion to it, which I, I sort of liked for the purposes of our public recreational park. Not that you wouldn't hurt yourself if you fell on it, but it's just a little less wear and tear on your knees and, and joints. Um, but yeah, it's a slightly different bounce. You know, what we found out from, um, the people at Ocean City is, is that, you know, some people like the professional players may not like it, but, you know, the recreational players find it fine.
Thanks. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions from the table?
I, one quick one. We're, we're talking about, uh, for the Premier System, we're talking about it on both the tennis courts and the basketball courts, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Given, uh, for the tennis courts, at least given, um, the demographics of those who use it, I think a slightly slower bounce and a little bit of cushion is probably.
Careful how you phrase that, Bonnie.
Speaking for myself.
National Women's Day. Keep going.
I haven't, I have never played on, uh, tennis on, uh, on this surface. I don't think. Is there anywhere else around here that has it? Like, they don't have this over, they don't have this at Dave Marshall, right? That's just cement, I think.
Yeah, but I think some, some of your indoor ones are probably more like what we're talking about.
Yeah, I, I have a feeling maybe that's what they have over there and it is, it is a li- it's, I mean, since Rob, you know, is a far better player than I am, it's, it, I, I think he'll be pleased with the surface. It, it moves pretty quickly if it's what they have over it. Over indoor court.
You know, you said, you, you said you were a basketball player. Did you get the opportunity to dribble a basketball on this stuff?
I didn't dribble. I just dunked it.
In your dreams.
No, I'm just kidding.
We're having comedy club here tonight.
The first time when Emery wasn't with us, we did bounce the tennis ball around, but I didn't have a chance to bounce a basketball around. But, you know, I've been on a lot of different courts and I remember the Cape and Loop in High School had that old tartan turf basketball court in the old high school. And it's kind of reminded me of that a little bit, which, you know, just to get used to it. It's, it's not. Yeah, it's really not cra- a crazy different kind of surface. It's just not asphalt.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I will say that as the mother of a basketball player, um, I was talking about this at home and my son had said, I wish they had that where I play. So he, he, as a seventeen-year-old boy who goes out and plays with his friends all the time, thought it sounded cool. So.
We need to be cool.
Any other questions for Charlie? Thank you, Charlie.
Well.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding the, uh, improvements to the tennis courts?
I, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I, I will, I would move that we accept the bid, um, and use, um, I believe it's bid alternate number, no, accepted the base bid together with bid alternates number one and number two. Uh, number one being the Premier Tennis System, uh, number two being the reuse of the pens, the fence posts.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Charlie, thank you.
Thank you.
We're not gonna let go of that.
Too tempting, Rob. All right, so I see, uh, Janelle's joined us again just in time to get to item I one, which is discussion possible action on a minor subdivision of lands of Jill Bartholomew and Matthew Tittman located at four oh eight Pilot Town Road. Sussex County Tax Map three thirty-five eight dash eight point zero zero dash two three, two two three dash zero zero, LPC recommendation number six forty-nine. Janelle, you wanna talk to us about this? What's?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. So this is a minor subdivision. What this is, is there's a parcel of land at four oh eight Pilot Town Road. The property owners seeking to create a separate parcel of land. The property is Zoned R two H, so it is historic district. The owners are aware that any new building will actually have to go before the, before H Park for review and consideration. They have, um, looked at the property. Uh, it does comply with the R two, uh, code requirements. And they will, uh, it's not located in the floodplain, so there are no issues with that. Now, the subdivision did go through the homeowners association. The homeowners association has recorded a, an amendment to their requirements to allow this property to be subdivided. The planning commission held a meeting on February seventeenth. They discussed the minor subdivision, did recommend approval of the minor subdivision with the condition that the, there's part of the driveway overlaps onto part of the proposed a lot that there either be an easement or that portion of that driveway be removed. And the owner is, is acceptable, is fine with that, uh, condition as they were hoping, planning on addressing that issue. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Regarding that, regarding the driveway, Janelle, are you saying that the, um, if they did not remove, they would have an easement to accommodate it as it stands right now, correct? They would create an easement? Is that what you're saying?
They'll either remove the, this, the part that's, that's going across the, the proposed property line or create an easement for sharing that, that area or of the, of the driveway.
Right, so there, in a, the end effect would be that there would be only one, uh, driveway apron out on Ocean View Boulevard. Is that correct?
No, there's a possibility there could be two. It's just the, in the back portion of the driveway, it overlaps onto the proposed driveway or the proposed property line. So the concern was there is that needs to either be removed or have an easement for part of, um, the Bartholomew Tittman's driveway to be on the neighbor's property. But it also could be a shared driveway and then there would be an easement in a maintenance agreement that would be identified and the final plan if they chose to do that.
And that's a private arrangement anyway, that kind of easement.
Correct, but we would get that shown on the record plan, so it would be done once. Recorded.
I see. Okay. I was thinking that the plan, the end plan was that it was gonna be a shared driveway. And, but you're now saying that there would, might be an additional driveway entrance on Ocean View. Okay, thank you.
Andrew?
Uh, I understand there's, uh, maybe Glenn's in a position to talk about this. If there's a, there's a deed, a prior deed restriction for one and, and whether there was any other opposition that we've heard of from any of the other neighbors on this one.
No, I'm not aware of any other opposition. There is a deed restriction and the deed says the following. The above described property is not subject to further subdivision. Um, the individuals that would have the right to enforce that deed and restriction is perhaps the HOA and perhaps other owners in um, that subdivision who have a similar deed restriction. As, as Janelle said, I guess the HOA has already, um, looked at this and, um, amended. Did they amend their docs, Janelle, to allow for it?
They adopted, because they had, had a vote and they had the majority of the property owners voted in favor of the minor subdivision. And then they did record a document that allowed for the subdivision to occur.
Okay.
And that was recorded.
So normally.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could you repeat that? I didn't quite catch.
Yeah.
What, um, Pilot Town Village, and I see the Jim Sleesmans among the attendees. Um, could, could you tell, say again what the Pilot Town Village HOA said?
So they held a vote regarding the subdivision of the, the property. The HOA voted and the majority of the property owners voted in favor to allow the subdivision of this property. And they amended their documents and recorded, uh, a document stating that this property could be subdivided.
And you've, you've seen that, your, that's personal knowledge of yours?
Correct.
Right.
How, how recent was that vote?
It was, I believe it was this year.
Mr. Sleesman's on, he probably can verify that.
Okay, I mean, we're not talking.
It was late last year or early this year because, um, that's why this, because I know the property owners had been working with the homeowners association because we wanted to make sure, because they were also for that, that needed to happen before it could be considered by this body. Um, and that they wanted to address that. So they did take care of that. It was late last year, early this year.
Current neighbors, current neighbors.
No, it was the entire homeowners, so everybody in that subdivision.
That's what I mean. I mean, that's what I mean, a recent meeting, current neighbors.
Yes. And I will note, there were some neighbors who, who were, who did not. I believe there were neighbors who voted against it. But the majority did, um, vote for it. And there were some adjacent neighbors who have some concerns about the subdivision. Uh, but they are not part of the homeowners association.
I've got a.
Are they party to, there, are they party to the private deed?
No, they are not.
Mayor Jim Sleisman has his hand up. Do you want me to unmute him?
Uh, I think, yeah, let's do. Jim would, I, I was gonna ask him if you had any comments, so thank you for answering that. Jim, welcome. You need to unmute yourself, Jim.
Can we unmute?
Jim, can you unmute yourself?
Got it. Yes. Do you hear me now?
Yes, you're great. Okay, we got you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yes. Wha- what happened? The, 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 um, this has been requested a few times from the Mukermans about subdividing this lot. Uh, there was a nineteen eighty-eight D that stated that it couldn't be subdivided. There was a nineteen eighty eight D that stated that it couldn't be subdivided. That was between the original owners and developers. The subsequent D, I think in nineteen ninety two, doesn't mention it, didn't mention any previous restrictions. Plus the fact that the HOA, North City, can enforce deed restrictions. It has to be a civil action. We sent out a. Letter to all residents requesting the change of the covenants to allow that property, which is unique within our community. So only one. To allow the covenants to be changed. This was just recently, we within the last couple of months. We have more than a majority of residents who approved it. The attorney has refiled our covenants. We state that that lot number seventy seven and four oh eight Pilot Town Road can be subdivided. And so the HOA is in full agreement with it and. They have to go through and they're aware of, they have to go through, of course, our architectural requirements as well as the historical society. So it's as far as the HOA is concerned, everything's been done in accordance with and conjunction and advice of our attorney. And it's just been recently filed over the last three to four weeks. So it's finalized as far as we are concerned. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, anybody have any other further questions for Mr. Sleesman at this point? Alright, Janelle, are there any other landscaping or other encroachments on this property that we should be concerned about?
Not that, not for the proposed property, though. Everything is in compliance.
Right. Alright, so I think we've had a good explanation as to about the the easement or the restriction thereof that's been revised. Is there a motion here?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I would move that we approve a minor subdivision for lands of Jill Bartholomew and Matthew Tittman. Located at four oh eight Pilot Town Road S C T M thirty three thirty five dash eight point oh oh dash two two three point oh oh. As recommended in El- the Lewis Planning Commission Recommendation Number Six Forty Nine.
Are you looking for a second there?
Yep, thank you, Rob. Well, you were to say something.
If if you would take a roll call vote, just because it's a land use decision, I'd like to have some reasons on the record as to why you're voting, how you're voting, please.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Andrew, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go. Because it meets the code and there's no, seems to have, as Mr. Sleesman said. More than a majority and full agreement of the HOA and has been vetted by their HOA attorney. For those reasons, I vote to approve it.
Jim, you want to vote? I, yeah, I'll vote to approve it and. My comments would mirror what Andrew has just cited. He seemed to be in full compliance, so there's no reason to object.
I I also vote to approve for the reasons Andrew stated.
Okay, Bonnie?
Same here. Andrew said it very well. I'll vote to approve.
I too will vote affirmative using Andrew's explanation. I think he covered it very well, so. A motion carries, the slot can be subdivided. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sleesman, for being here tonight. That was very helpful information. Okay, so then moving on to item I two is a presentation of possible action. For the city of Lewis to permit the installation and operation of a high frequency radar unit. We have, I believe we have some people here to work to talk about this.
I don't believe they're here.
I thought they were planning to be.
So I I saw that I missed it in email from earlier today saying that they did not intend to be here, but that we could go through the material. So I'm I'm going to share my screen. And kind of go through. Mayor Becker and I did meet with this group. It's the the Mid-Atlantic Regional Coastal Ocean Observing System. So this is their request letter to put a high high frequency radar unit on. The dune between Beach One and Beach Two. I'm gonna scroll up and just hit some of the high points of their presentation. So one, this is a the the Mid-Atlantic group, this is part of a integrated. Ocean observing system. The partners include NOAA, NASA. You know, you can see all of the various federal agencies. And they are, they are nonprofit. They're affiliated with the University of Delaware. And. The information they collect would be used by the Coast Guard. By the National Weather Service for tidal predictions and, you know, as you all know, we had an oil spill. Last summer in the in the bay and and this would help with that as well. I hope you, I'm gonna scroll. These are some of the the partners that have. The high frequency radars on their on their property. Notice Delaware State Parks is on there. And and that is there, there's one at Cape Henlopen State Park near the point. Which you can see on this slide here. So it's near the pilot station. There's a on a dune on the ocean side of the point. They're requesting this location here and you can see. This this blue cone is kind of their their range with the current. Radar and you can see how how it would be expanded significantly with the one on Lewis Beach. So this is a picture of the radar or of the radar back here. That's the one at Cape Henlopen. It's eighteen feet tall, anchored by removable stakes. It is quiet, low power, FCC approved. Won't harm humans. So and they they will list us as additionally insured on liability certificate. This is the mechanical piece that goes with it. And this is where they would like to locate it. So they would put the antenna up here on the dune and the mechanical. Equipment right here on the backside of Beach Two restroom.
Can you show the mechanical equipment again? Can you go back a slide or two? How how big is this camera?
It's a relatively small box, Bonnie. You can see it right there.
Thank you, thank you.
Not the best picture of our restroom there.
But. Do we have a, Anne Marie, excuse me for, that's a great question, Bonnie. What size is that structure that they would be constructing?
Yeah, it's.
It's about the size of a small dispenser, soda dispenser.
Or similar to a transformer or something.
And they only have to access it in about very infrequently. Because all the data is transmitted via computer.
So they would look to i- install an electrical outlet. That I think Beach Two restroom would be the location, put the enclosure in, install the the sensor. There's no heavy machinery and as the mayor said, they're there one day every six months. Potential cost is about fifty dollars per month in electricity, which may be a high estimate. And if mayor and council approve it, it would be installed in May. So again, this is a picture of what it is and I know. Councilperson Williams, I know you said that you had. Asked some questions about it and you have, I think, some some feedback on the usefulness of it.
Yeah.
You're talking to me?
And I just asked one of a local person about about it and just. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we're good.
Yeah, the feedback that I've heard is just that it's beneficial in sense of search and rescue especially. You saw, you could see the size of the cone there. It just increases that. The thing I didn't get from this person, and I was hoping that Garrett maybe would be able to join us is. So like you said, the technical aspects of do, are then boaters expected to to hone in on this beak? In or, you know, the removable pieces around the stakes and such, how removable are they in sense of it's just not going to grow legs itself?
What do you mean, grow legs? Anne Marie, you're muted.
Do you know, all the time. They said they have not had them grow legs and walk.
Okay.
They have had them knocked down in storms. They said that, I mean, one thing that they did say that is if something happened and the city didn't want it there anymore. It it's not, you know, there's no long term commitment to allowing it to be there. If if we said you need to come get it next week, they could. So I don't think it's something that. I I don't think that it's something that boats in the water would connect to. I think it it it's more their own. The monitoring of of the various partner agencies.
Okay.
So again, if the Coast Guard needs Coast Guard for for rescue or NOAA or, you know, for for tides and. Yeah, so even if you look at all the work we're doing on, you know, climate change and sea level rise, rise. Obviously, better tide data is going to be beneficial for that as well. So it does seem like. There are many benefits to the data that would be provided.
I think if you could go scroll back, Anne Marie, if you still have your screen up. I it's on one of the pictures, they, one of their slides, they showed where their radar network is located. And I I thought that was an interesting piece. Couple more. There you go. If you look up and down the Jersey Coast, there's quite a few of them that they have. And then if you look over to the Delaware Bay. They really don't have much in the way of of any radar equipment here. We we have just really the one in Cape Henlopen and the other up at the top of the bay.
And Anne Marie, would that tide data and such be accessible to us direct?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be through, you know, the the various, you know, for NOAA. But, you know, you have the Army Corps in here as well. So so all of the. The open data sites that we would get tide data from. And and again, they are affiliated, this Maricose is is affiliated with the University of Delaware. So as you know, we work very closely with Sea Grant, so I'm sure Sea Grant would have access to that information as well.
And one of the advantages, Gerhart lives here in the community, so if there were any issues, he would be able to. Be right immediately on site to to take care of addressing those, so.
I have two questions that I made. Anne Marie, the wire that runs from the antenna. Back to the control panel, would that be buried?
I I don't believe that there's a wire.
Hand trench.
But I I think it's, I think it's all.
You think so, huh?
You know, you're right. It does like. So it would, it would be, it it would be buried, but it's also, it's in an area. It's up on the dune where people are not allowed and we do have the dune fencing there at this point, so. It's hopefully fewer people will be up there.
And and people are not allowed. Is this a place that's protected for birds or for, you know, any kind of wildlife?
It's an osprey makes a nest there.
Is that what?
Yeah. It's just that. It's just the dune and we have a a fence around the dune, so.
Okay, but it's not one of those environmental sensitive areas that's protected for, okay. The, okay, the other question I have is, the data, once it was it's received or transmitted back to the box. How does it get transferred from there to, I assume it's some kind of a wifi connection?
Yeah.
And are they connecting to the antennas that are at the ferry terminal to do this, make this all work?
I I'm assuming that it's, you know, what whatever cellular network because there's no hardwiring.
So the, if I understand this proposal, they, the city is. They're seeking approval from the city to install and operate and the unit itself will be owned by the University of Delaware. And operated through the Maricose Organization. It's my understanding, correct?
Yeah. That's where Gerhart works, is the University of Delaware.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I'm finished with my questions.
Mayor, I simply like to say, I think this is very exciting.
Looks like we need to get Kyle Conover to put a mural on the back of the bathroom.
Yeah, what is, does that bathroom still looks like that, the back of it?
You know, fortunately, I think that's a relatively recent photo, so we're gonna have to go out and check that out.
Be part of the spring cleanings. Okay, alright. I, Rob, I heard you say that you think it's an exciting.
Yeah, I think it's great that we can contribute this way.
I think it's.
I agree with Rob and and everybody else. I mean, I I don't see any downside. I see a lot of upside.
Alright. So how about a motion to move forward on this?
So moved.
Okay. I think Andrew was up, but so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, moving then on to item I three is discussion possible action on Captain's Quarters easement license. This is a longstanding easement that has been in effect since at least two thousand, for ten years. And it's a five year period, so this is its third renewal term. And it's currently at thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. And Anne Marie, you've done some work on this. You want to talk about it a little bit?
So.
Twenty four foot license, twenty four foot easement along the property fronting Captain's Quarters condominium.
Right, so this is a a license agreement and it is in place until March eighteenth, twenty thirty seven. But the the cost of the easement that the city charges. I guess is is approved in ten year increments, so it was in two thousand and eleven was approved. At twelve hundred dollars a year. For.
It's approved in five year increments.
I'm sorry, in five year increments, sorry, but it was approved for twelve hundred dollars for the five year period from March nineteenth. Two thousand and eleven through March eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen and then. Thirteen hundred twenty dollars for March eighteen, sixteen to March eighteen, twenty twenty one. So it's due to expire this month, not, well, the the fee, so. The, what we need to do is is re-up the fee and then we would reach out to the the condo association. And get that.
So the original easement or the original lease was that it had a ten percent increase when it was renewed five years ago. It went from twelve to thirteen twenty. Has there been any discussion with them about an increase?
We, we have not talked to them. This just came to my attention, I I guess last week and. We knew we needed to get it on on the agenda.
Anne Marie, it appears that.
So I, I don't.
It appears that there have been, it's it's been. The the license fee has been increased by ten percent every five years for number of five year periods. Is there any reason we shouldn't apply that again? That's not very far off inflation.
That was my question, Rob. That we did ten percent in five years ago, are we? I think.
Pretty simple there. I think that's easy enough.
Yeah, it's very simple. So we could do it, you know, we could propose a ten percent increase and go from there.
So are we gonna do ten percent for five years and then ten percent on that for the next five years?
Yes, it'd be like fourteen some odd and then sixteen some odd, right?
Right.
So it'd be, the the first one would be fourteen hundred fifty two dollars. And then the second one would be one thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars and and twenty cents. I would just. I would round it to the dollar.
Okay.
And that's that's paid through their property tax, is that right?
It, Ellen Lorraine, is that how it's billed now?
Now, we invoice. No, we invoice it annually.
What do they use that twenty-four foot easement for?
Parking.
Well, then it, it, what are their applicable parking rates for that period of time? That's what we should be.
There are no parking rates for that right now.
I know, but you know, everywhere else in the city.
I think this is used for their, I believe this parking is used for the commercial space on the front of the building. Because the other space, uh, than the rear of the building is all, uh, these is all used and are perhaps even owned by uh, the the people who live in the residential units in this building.
Thank you.
Further discussion. We have a motion to approve the lease, uh, the extension of the easement on this with the rate increases as we've discussed.
So moved.
Thank you, Tim. Motion and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I four, a discussion and determination of opening city hall window for voter registration on Saturday, April seventeenth, from eight AM to twelve PM, and this would be for a voter registration as Amber discussed in her city manager's report. Assuming that we we will know before then whether or not we're going to have an election. Uh, and so this would be uh, in in an opportunity for voters to register on a weekend. We've done this almost every year, we've had an election. Any questions about this from anyone? Okay, is there a motion to approve this? Thank you. For a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. Motion and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to I five, this discussion, possible action on Savannah Road sidewalk improvements. Del Dot requested easements. Uh, we have had the letter attached regarding of these improvements on Savannah Road, um, and at the corner of Quaker Road and North Atlantic Drive. So I think this is pretty self-explanatory. Any questions about this or Amber, is there's or information you would like to share about it?
So, um, several months ago, you all approved a a separate easement for the same section of of sidewalk that is um, Del Dot is is doing outside of the city to, um, to really facilitate better pedestrian access to the high school. So this, um, this easement is across the the Wellfield property. So this initially went to, um, BPW. Um, they've approved it, but it also needs, obviously, because the mayor and council, um, hold the title. It it needs, um, council's authorization and and a city signature as well.
Any questions?
Just for the public's benefit, the 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 easement's been given the whole way through Quakertown otherwise, right? Or up through the high school, at least?
So when I met with Del Dot about the, um, followers last week, I was told that there were two easements they were waiting on and this is one of them, so.
And do we know where the other one is that's?
No, it it's not city-related and it's outside of the city, so I didn't, I didn't.
Uh, I have one question for you, Amber. Uh, I think this should be directed to you, is I noticed that there is a, uh, in the letter dated February twenty-fourth, they describe a temporary construction easement. This is at the, the end of the first paragraph. Uh, they don't, they don't, do not address restoration in their letter. And I want to make sure that they are responsible and they understand that they are responsible for restoring any area that they disturb.
They are.
They are.
Okay. You know that because you know these people?
Required.
I know that because I know, because I've had property done, uh, with a temporary construction easement and they always do restore.
Okay, thank you. As long as that's addressed, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, I, I'm just, as a, a legal matter, mayor, the the letter is addressed to the BPW, but it says it is necessary to require the following interest from your property. It's, it's really, um, should be addressed to us. As Amber says, the title is held by us. It's confusing to me.
I will, I tag along with that question and ask, has Glenn, have you reviewed this document and are you okay with it?
I have seen easements. They actually, um, list out exactly as it's titled, that the City of Lewis is the is the owner for the benefit of BPW. That's why it requires both signatures. They acknowledge that the city is the owner. BPW ha- has the beneficial use of it. So I think it's, I think that requirement of two signatures is proper and the way they've set it up is, it accurately depicts the ownership.
Thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
And if you, uh, if you look at the signature page, it does have both, uh, Amber's signature and the, uh, and the and the Board of Public Works signature on it. So I think we're okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this easement? Thank you, Rob. Is there a second? Thank you, Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving then on to, um, item I six, this presentation of possible action on a request from Showfield LLC for a right-of-way dedication of ten feet from tax parcel number three thirty-five dash eight point one five dash forty point zero two Lewis Public Library Trailhead to become part of Monroe Avenue. This is, uh, all part of the creation of turning lanes and Amber pulled it up so we can see it very clearly. Uh, as they prepare to, uh, create the access of out of Monroe Avenue extended onto, uh, Freeman Highway. So this is a ten feet of, uh, to create a turn lane.
So the existing right-of-way is here, it will come out to here. And really, this is the dedication of what is currently part of a city parcel to become part of a city right-of-way. It, so the city will continue to own it. Um, but this allows the developer to expand the the roadway to add the right turn lane onto Freeman.
And Amber, this is not part of the land that's leased to the library, is it?
No.
It it's part of the Trailhead property.
Right, that's right.
It's at the other end of the property, Rob, so. Actually, the next page, if you can pull up the next photograph, it's, it does show a good photograph of it. It's that piece right there where Amber is running the cursor. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, yeah, let's talk. Um, I've given this, uh, this proposal some considerable thought and I am, uh, I'm disturbed by this. Am I, uh, why I'm disturbed is because I don't think that we have, we don't have the whole picture here. We know now what the developer is asking of us to to give, but we don't know what the entire intersection plan is. And, uh, I think it's a little premature at this point in time to be granting an easement without knowing what the entire plan is for that intersection. I'm also mindful of the fact that this plan does not seem to include, it accommodates vehicular traffic in the form of automobiles, but um, I don't see any detail that relates to the fact that the trailhead is is present, is adjacent and, uh, and the volume of bikers who use the same area. And that's a concern of mine. Those are concerns of mine.
Mayor, we have Ring Lardner.
I see, and Riggs raised his hand. Ring, you want to come on up? Get yourself unmuted, Ring.
Sir, I believe I did.
Good, you're good. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Uh, for the record, Ring Lardner with Davis, Bone and Fidel, um, the engineer of record for the proposed project. To answer Councilman Ritz's, uh, question, the, uh, whole intersection improvements that White's Pine Meadow, or now known as Old Town at White's Pine Meadow, will be doing a full signalized intersection at Monroe Avenue in both directions. So it'd be Monroe Avenue coming from Showfield, uh, heading towards the city, uh, that will also include a uh, dedicated right turn lane and a shared left through lane, similar to what you just saw on your screen coming from the city uh, from Monroe Avenue. Uh, we will be making a modification to the shared use path slash junction breakwater trail on our side of the roadway for that intersection improvement. Um, there will be, uh, left turn lanes in both directions on Freeman Highway. There will be right turn lanes, uh, in both directions Freeman Highway, so you'll be able to make a right-hand turn onto Monroe Avenue in both directions. Um, and those are the improvements that are proposed. I could pull it up on the screen, but but Councilman Ritz, that'll be items you will see as part of the final application process, which we hope to submit. Um, in the middle of April is our last item is the engine's plan approval from Del Dot slash DRBA. And the the right-of-way is what I would consider more of a formality switch than anything else because the lands are both owned by the City of Lewis. It's just one's gonna be used for road versus right now, it's being used as part of the junction breakwater trail. So it's, it's just changing from one, I call one pot to another pot. Um, and that does allow for those kind of movements. Uh, we do account for bicy- bicycle traffic. Um, they'll be, uh, using the shared, uh, right turn lane and talking to, um, will have pedestrian crossings and the like to allow the truck connection to come across the street, which they're currently doing now. Um, that was one of the reasons why we did the intersection improvement, uh, for those that were part of the public hearing process for the preliminary consent of the, uh, the plan. So hopefully that answered your question. Um, I may not have all your answers tonight on the screen and I can share my screen if you wanted to see it, but it will all come forth when you do the full application review for final plan approval.
Uh, thank you, Ring, for that explanation. Uh, are you, uh, uh, is, so I think that you're suggesting that the DRBA has come to agreement to allow the the intersection to be, uh, um, signalized, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and I know there, it was proposed, it was, this is kind of a throwaway comment, but it was made in a public meeting, not by an elected official, but I believe by the developer possibly, and it was suggested that even, uh, the Freeman Highway might be taken over by Del Dot. Is that in fact what's under, uh, gonna happen?
No, sir, that portion will not be taken over by Del Dot. That portion will remain under DRBA. Uh, there's portions further down towards, uh, Route One that are actually owned by DRBA, so so there's some other talks separate aside from this project, but this portion of roadway will remain under DRBA control, maintenance responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can you, uh, indulge me here? Uh, can you describe what kind of, uh, improvements are going to be made, uh, for uh, bicycle traffic at this intersection, moving people from the, uh, from your project side, the south side of Freeman Highway over to the Trailhead side?
So right now, the intent would be for bicycular traffic to use the right turn lane coming out of the city to cross the road. Um, as part of the, uh, signalized improvements, um, uh, for that movement. I think the intent really wa- was, um, not to have the crossing there, but but we've accounted for, um, not providing a dedicated bike line, but a shared right turn lane, bike lane, uh, without getting too technical in the conversation. The right turn lane is not required based on analysis. It's, it was a desire, wish requirement of Delta to put that right turn lane, and we tried to leave that right turn lane out and just do a bicycle lane for traffic. So that was kind of the agreed-upon approach, that right turn lane would be a shared right turn lane, bike lane coming out of the city. Um, to to allow bicycular traffic and vehicle traffic to work together.
And that was a discussion that you and your, uh, client had with Del Dot, is that correct?
We have. There's also been mentioned, Councilman Ritz, about adding a sidewalk, um, to connect the trailhead to the, to the connection. That's been brought up. Um, I've had that that conversation with my client as well, and that's one of the ones that we kind of feel that um, Del Dot should be part of putting in that improvement, uh, because they're the ones who put that trailhead there altogether without accounting for any pedestrian or pedestrian slash vehicle traffic, um, across the roadway, roadway. Um, but that question has come up and that is something that, um, we figure probably would come back up with the planning commission. When we come back through final plan process, it wouldn't change the, uh, right turn lane or anything else, because that sidewalk would be located outside the right-of-way on city property.
Are you an engineer?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Are, you are an engineer?
A professional engineer, yes, sir.
In your opinion, would a, would like a tunnel system underneath of the King's Highway work?
No, sir.
Why not?
For ADA accessibility to get ten, twelve feet underneath the roadway and then you'd have to get DRBA to maintain it or somebody to maintain it, it just would not work.
Would, but that was considered at some point, Tom?
That, we never considered, I don't think DRBA would consider.
Uh, Ring, tell me, did I understand you, you mentioned something just a minute ago, something about a sidewalk. Uh, is this, the sidewalk is not shown on the easement exhibit A, is it?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay, can you describe it to me? Uh, I I'm pretty good about conceptualism. I can conceptualize pretty well. Is it, is the sidewalk proposed to be, for example, along the right-of-way line in that area?
Right now, Councilman Ritz, we're not proposing a sidewalk, um, to make the, to make, to connect the trailhead to the shared news path. Um, but if a sidewalk were going to be installed by somebody, um, it would be just outside the right-of-way. Um, that was shown in the plan that Amber had put up on the screen earlier.
Right, okay, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have a a request from one of our viewers that we allow Mr. Lardner to share his screen.
I think that would be a good idea, because that will show us.
You're able to share your screen. I have it set up that way, so, um.
All right, let me pull the plans up and then I'll share my screen, Amber.
Thank you.
We have seen a proposed intersection. I think we saw it last week, actually.
Can I ask a quick question while Ring is working on this? It, for the sidewalk that he's proposing?
Not proposing.
I I'm sorry, that he's, I understand. The sidewalk that he said somebody could locate, but not him.
Amber, I don't see the option to share my screen.
Okay, because I've got it set up that, oh, oh, you know what? I think I need to, let me hold on, I need.
I'm sorry, Councilman Ross, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay, for for somebody's sidewalk.
But you're not a panelist. Now, now you're a panelist. So now you'll be able to share your screen.
That's a whole new view right here.
All right, Bonnie, finish your question or your statement.
So for our, our notional, very nice, for our notional sidewalks, that that would be on city land.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was, that was the, my whole question.
Notional sidewalk.
Is there, and I'm assuming there is room there to put in a, should somebody want to put in a sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There, there would be so, I mean, some grading would have to be by the five, yes, there's an area there to fit the sidewalk, so. I'm gonna start on the city side of Freeman Highway, so uh, to put everyone in perspective, this is the right-of-way request that we're showing. Um, I think we're probably a hundred eighty degrees from what you originally saw. Uh, so that the city would be at the top of my screen, Freeman Highway is at the bottom of the screen. So you can see, it's the right turn lane here. Uh, we did extend sidewalk to the right-of-way, so it'd be outside. We did extend sidewalk to the right away, so it'd be outside of D R B A's area, so that sidewalk could go. Around this way. Around the. Trialhead parking, or it could go parallel with Monroe Avenue. We did look at the library plans, and library plans did show sidewalk. But that was future sidewalk to be installed by others or by the library, so it was. Our understanding that either the library was gonna do it. Then right to the trial program would do it, or maybe the city would do it, so that's why I talk about the. Potential for a sidewalk, but we're not proposing it. To zoom out a little bit more. This is now the main intersection. That the signal design is being. We have this design done, I don't have that in front of me. But you can see there's a left turn lane going into the city. Left turn lane coming into our site, right turn lane going into the city, which is not there now. We also remove all of the guardrails, so it becomes a much safer approach into Monroe Avenue. Right turn lane in us. Like I said, a minor modification of the Junction Breakwater Trail. The one pedestrian crossing. There is a Dart bus stop that's gonna be located on the trialhead side of. The project, and we will also have another bus stop on our side of the project for Dart. That is a request of Dart. So if I zoom out a little bit. You can see that our improvement comes back pretty far to create the left hand. Turn into the city right hand turn. And then. Same thing, we go up on the bridge pretty good to again make the left turn lanes established. We do do some minor grading modifications. In the area. And we do a significant amount of regrading, reconfiguring this area here, if you all recall, there's a hodgepodge pipe system and everything else. All that will be completely underground when it's all said and done with a couple of catch bases, so to clean up that area. To make it look a lot better, so that is what's being proposed. By the developer in consultation with Delta D R B A. We do plan on making a submission on Friday. Which we believe will be our last submission, and like I said, we expect to be able to submit for finals come mid-April.
Ring, I propose, I'm of the opinion that, or of the understanding that that bus stop. On the library's side. Was, you know, the sidewalk just goes, you know, to the to the crosswalk. But I also was under the impression that. From previous conversations that that that. From that bus landing, there was also the idea that that might be extended over to the trailhead, is that correct?
Well, that's the whole conversation about about what to do with the sidewalk on the trailhead, and that's kind of where, you know. We developers, like that that sidewalk should happen, should be happening based on Denrec or the library, whatever those plans are on that site. Again, based on the library's plan to show they future path. Through their site.
I think that's an important ingredient, how that connectivity. Because right now you get off the bus, the only the only real option you have. Is either to walk the edge of the pave, walk the edge of the pavement, once you get off that sidewalk, or cross over and go into. The development, the White Pond Meadow development.
Yeah, I'm not sure why Denrec, when they did the trial, why they didn't stand the sidewalk, at least the proper line for future, I don't know why they didn't do it, but they didn't do it.
Okay, all right.
They were looking for others to pay for.
Okay, so what we're we're here to discuss is that's that that easement along. Right, that that Ring's been showing us. Are there any further questions or discussion about this?
All I'll say is, I I guess I can't imagine this intersection not having a dedicated right turn lane. You know, if it's gonna be, particularly if it's signalized. I just think as a practical matter. It's necessary to make this intersection work.
Yeah, and the fact that the guardrails are being removed in the the swale of the the swales and. Confluence of drainage pipes that are there are all being undergrounded will make this intersection a lot more safe. For vehicles and pedestrians. Any other questions?
I'm not convinced it'll make it safer for pedestrians or bicyclers, but I agree with Bonnie from a from a. Just fact that it's signalized that this thing. From a right hand turn perspective, you kind of have to have that, I guess.
Well, if, will there be a walk light, I guess I should have asked Ring that one, still, oh, there he is. Will there be a walk light, Ring? Will there be an opportunity for people to get across that intersection on bicycle?
Councilman Gore, yes, there will be pedestrian crossing, so there will be a ped pole for pedestrians to push a button to activate the signal if vehicles aren't there to activate the signal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to regarding this proposal?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Rob, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bonnie. The motion is second to approve this. This request, all in favor? Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, I will vote yes, so motion carries. Four to one abstention.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ring. And moving on to I seven is discussion possible action on a request by from Rickwell for the city to pave Alaska Avenue. Alaska Avenue is a paper street that runs off of Cape Penlope and Drive, we've had. Considerable correspondence from Mr. Quill regarding. This unpaved street and his request that it be paved. Anne Marie, do we have anything other than Mr. Quill's correspondence on this?
We do not. It's just one one point is that he he did submit. With his documents. Indication that a- as you get closer to the marsh, it does become. Wetland. Had a wetland delineation of the property. One of one of his requests was that we consider. Abandoning the the. End of the property where it becomes. Wetland to abandon the right of way and and. And. Zone it to open space similar to what we did on the the other. The the. Streets off of Cedar, the I think the main difference is in this case. There. Are lots that take access over the wetlands, so I think. I'm not sure, you know, and and that. If you were to abandon the right of way, that there's a whole process in the. In the charter that you would have to follow, so. If you would like to initiate that process, you could you could certainly provide direction to to staff to to, you know. Start the the ball rolling on that. And but the other piece is. Will the city? Make the improvements to Alaska Avenue to provide access to all the properties.
This this Alaska Avenue currently serves two houses, is that correct?
But I think only one has, one needs access from Alaska.
Right, the other one uses it, but it doesn't have to have it.
Right.
And have we had any requests? From the people who use it to pave this street?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not from the other property owners, no.
Those are some related questions I had, so the. It looks like there's a need here, one of the things that in the submission of the documents, it says. Dell that's still convinced that the only way. Of accessing the property would be via Alaska Avenue, so I understand the applicant's request to. To apply for this, but my questions relate to how in in section thirty four of the charter. Refers to when we do set out to improve a street or lay a new street, that you you have a committee, a committee of three, I believe it says.
Right.
And then in the. In the code, it says that if this street is not of a standard dimension, which it seems like this may fit the bill. Then that case, it needs to go to Planning Commission. I have questions on those two for the table.
Glenn, do you want to opine on that?
Yeah, I can say that I've not looked at this in the context of of the charter, I I do presume that there'd be some additional. Review for, I mean, typically when you open a street, there is a charter process that needs to to take place.
Is that when you open a street or when you abandon a street?
Certainly when you abandon, but I I thought when you actually open a street, there had to be. I I can check, I'm sorry, I don't know, maybe if the conversation continues, I'll check right now.
The the language says the city council shall have the power and authority to lay out, locate, and open new streets, or widen, and alter existing streets. Or parts thereof. And to vacate or abandon, that's what it says, section thirty four.
I think it covers both, yeah.
But isn't this, but Alaska's already laid out. It's just not. Completed. And and all of it, is that, is that, is that a correct statement that the only access here, that Dell dot is insisting? Well.
Bonnie, you know what? It's it's in the letter dated December eighteenth from Delta. And it's on the. Third bullet on the first page.
I'm sorry, I had a lot of trouble following this stuff.
It's the very last page of our of our packet, one twenty nine and one thirty. The very last section, it says.
On the comp plan?
No.
No.
It's come from the Office of State Planning Coordination, says. Dell Dot's coordination manual addresses where entrances, meaning driveway, should be located, Dell Dot anticipates allowing access. Only by way of Alaska Avenue with no direct access on Savannah Road or Cape Penlope Drive.
Right.
So. What, given, given that, then what recourse would this the this person have to have to of any use of the property?
I'm not quite sure I follow that, Andrew. Just because Alaska Avenue is unimproved. Doesn't mean that it can't be used.
There it is, Bonnie, we just pulled it, Bonnie, Anne Marie just pulled it up.
I know, I think I'm looking at the right thing, I just.
It's a letter signed by Connie Holland.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm looking at, I just I just did not see this language, I apologize, I just did not see it.
It's consistent with language.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, under there.
Yeah, and they said the same thing back in August of of twenty eighteen, when this. Property went through plus. When it was being rezoned to residential.
But, well, yeah, it's not residential anymore, so does this still hold?
Well, yes, so this, this is from, this is from this past year.
When we, this is when we had to go through the whole, okay, reversal process.
Thank you, now I'm.
Right.
No, I apologize, I did look at section thirty four, and I I don't think the act of improving this street would require the the. Process that's laid out in the charter. It's already laid out, it's located on it, it's 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 on a plotted. Map, I think improving it does not require that charter. Treatment.
How about the second question around if it's, because it it I think a minimum, I mean, and maybe Mr. Quill can can answer this, but I don't know that the. The the easement, the right of way, or the the width that it's required, does it need to then go before planning commission if it's a. Customized, so to speak.
It's something, it's a different width. I think it would have.
But it doesn't because it's already existing.
Has it ever been paved?
No. Not to my knowledge.
If if we paved it, do we? Given that it's right by the wetlands. What what kind of additional storm? Well, additional impervious surface issues are we looking at?
So. This is probably one that if we were to. Pay that, we probably would want to look at. Pervious pavement because it is. In excellent recharge area, there's a a good bit of it that's wetland, I mean, we'd have to, Charlie would have to do some design because we want wanna. Not make it any wider than it needs to be so that we don't. You know, it may need. A Denrec permit if we if we actually get into. The wetland, so I I think there's a little bit of due diligence that we have to do. To be able to. You know, lay out what gets paved.
Okay, and it dealt, if I, now that I have been pointed to where this is. Dell dot isn't insisting that it be paved, is it, it's just saying that's where the access has to be.
Right. That's right, Quill's asking us. He's asking that we have paved. Do we have any idea what?
Just to finish, so to what, to Andrew's point. Whether it's paved or. Mr. Quill has, can access his property down Alaska now, right? Because it's, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's kind of rutted and.
Right, but so whether it's paved or not, doesn't affect Mr. Quill's access to his property.
Correct.
All right, okay, thank you.
But you do have a wetland issue that is.
Well, I'm a little, a little puzzled because. There are a lot of. Homeowners who have garage access. Off a paper street or an open space. On that side of town. And. I don't think I've heard any of them asking the city to pave it for them.
Right.
I don't see the difference between. That and Mr. Quill's request.
I guess the main difference is that this would be the only access to that property if Dell dot is not going to allow access from the other locations.
Would be.
Did Dell dot at one point say it would allow other access? I I don't recall this sole access.
I thought, I thought they had required before an entrance, in fact, I remember reading it, they had a requirement of an entrance on. Savannah as well as on Cape Penlope and Drive.
That's what I recalled as well.
It 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 might have been.
Right, so this is a change.
There are proposals for that.
Right, that they were not Dell Dot's proposals, those were proposals. Associated with how the property would be developed. And it, I mean, again, the plus comments aren't entirely binding, so it's possible. That access to Savannah or. Cape Penlope and Drive could be negotiated, the the concern with Dell dot, and and you know, they they have their their manual. That that governs development and road access and development. Is that? The entire frontage of both street. On that parcel. The the entire frontage is very close to the intersection, so from a safety. Perspective. Their their preference would be that the access were to come off of Alaska. And and I mean, I I think there's, you know.
I think it has to do with safety, doesn't it, Anne Marie?
Yes, because you want the, you want the road access to be. As far from the intersection as possible, and you also want to minimize the number of road access points, so. Alaska's still going to be there. Even if you put, and and if you put a a access point onto Cape Penlope and Drive. That is. As far away as you can get from the intersection, then it ends up right next to Alaska, so then you have these two. Points right next to each other, so so it really is a safety driven. Requirement.
Right. Right. I have a question. Is it your, is it your expectation that if the paving was done, that we would also be putting a curb, curbs in as well? And the reason I'm asking, I'm looking at section one seventy dash twenty seven. And I assume this is considered a residential street.
Yes, but when we did. It it's when we did Tennessee Avenue. We didn't do it. Not put curve in gutter.
Okay, but I know when you all, the city, and I don't know how many years ago this was. And right now, I can't remember what street name it is, Andrew might be able to help me out. As you go down Cedar, West, we're on the left hand side there, this is so on the canal side. There is a street that, at least one street there that does have. The rolling curb, I think that's what they're called.
Several streets that have.
Yeah. Yeah, and I. And I don't know how that street or those streets came to have those kinds of curves and other ones don't, I don't know that history.
When.
I assume that that meant our our code changed.
No, the code didn't change, I. No, the code didn't change. One, I mean, most of those streets over on Lewis Beach probably do predate the code. I know because of the some of the dynamics in that area being that you want to limit impervious cover and, you know, just the way the drainage works, you know, Charlie and his staff will look at at the project and make a determination of whether the curving is going to make things better or worse. So in much of Lewis Beach, I think that the determination is that the water is better managed if it stays as is.
Right. Well, then, okay. Well, the code indicates that we have to put a, it says required, curb is required.
That's subdivision code, right?
That's.
So that would, that would be new streets.
This is an existing street, Tim.
It's an existing street. Right.
That, to me, becomes the difference. So we're talking about paper streets versus open space. We've declared these areas that are not active streets as such, open space. If it is in fact a street, then I think it's a requirement that we have to keep them in maintained streets. That's what we tell our citizens.
We never.
It's an active street.
We never declared Alaska open space. We never.
That's not my point. That's my point.
But the reason was that, I mean, there's streets in their streets. I mean, this has access to basically one garage.
No, it has a house also.
It's, well, yeah, except there's another way to get there. It's not, it's not a street. It's not used in a street in the sense of, you know, McPhee or Third Street or any other street. It's more or less a driveway.
Clearly, this street would benefit one parcel, and it would not benefit the city otherwise. I wonder, has Mr. Quill come forward with an offer to finance the improvement?
Let the city do it.
That has been his request. There is one, there is one house that does front on that, onto that, onto Alaska Avenue.
I heard Anne Marie say, or you say, Mayor, that we haven't received requests.
No, that property is not made of requests that I'm aware of. And we don't, Anne Marie, and if Janelle's still on, maybe she can answer this question. Do we, Mr. Quill's not an applicant. Is he at this point in time for any kind of development?
No, he's not.
Okay, so there's not a sense of urgency at this point in time to actually commit the resources to make this improvement. Is that correct? In other words, we don't have, he's not an applicant with a plan under review that would require or anticipate that the street would be paved at the conclusion of his construction to have access. Is that right?
That, I would say that's correct. I'm not sure if that's the reason he's requesting it or not.
I understand, but I'm just trying to understand the urgency. That's all. I'm just trying to understand that.
I think the urgency is that he's wanting to develop his property. He has this letter from Del Dot. That's his urgency. But, you know.
Right, but the letter is not, is not time-sensitive. In other words, it doesn't say the city has a hundred and twenty days to build, to do the road, does it?
No, but he had asked in the past and when I, when Janelle and I met with him in early January, he asked about the request. And I asked that he submit something with sufficient detail for council to be able to consider it. So that's what he's done.
And that's what this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I see this as a request by a private citizen to, for the city to spend money for the benefit of a commercial developer, which he, which he is. I don't see anything wrong with him asking. But I don't think it would be right for the city to spend their money for that developer.
Do we have any idea what it would cost, pervious or impervious?
We do not.
I think you'd have to look at, perhaps, and Charlie could give us a better estimate. But what did it cost to do Tennessee Avenue? Eighty-five thousand or something like that.
That included the utilities.
Okay.
As well. I think it was sixty-six for the road itself. And I also think that the length was longer.
Then the Tennessee Avenue was longer than this would be, yeah.
So if we wanted to use pervious pavement.
Then it would drive the cost up.
Yeah, one other question I had about this is, given that it abuts wetlands and given the flooding over there, would any special engineering be required here?
Charlie's still with us? You could answer that question.
Charlie's left.
No, I'm here.
Oh, no, you are there. I'm sorry. I was looking on the wrong list. Sorry.
Wake up, Charlie.
I'd say this is, I'd say this is a complicated street, given the wetlands that are there. You know, just saying you're going to do permeable paving or permeable pavers just isn't going to fulfill the entire need because if you begin to disturb wetlands, you're going to be required to mitigate them somewhere. So that's going to be even greater cost that you create wetlands where you're taking wetlands away to pave the street.
Right.
It would take a little bit of work to do this one, right?
Would we have to, we'd have to create wetlands on other city property, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And we'd have to figure all that out. I mean, I can't tell you where that would happen right now.
And we, and his ask is for not the entire right of way, the whole length of it to be paved, but just a certain portion of it, correct?
He's asking us to pave, he's asking us to pave Alaska Avenue. If you look at his proposed plot plan, which is on that sheet that shows the wetland delineation, his street into that development doesn't come in until well down into the, well down into Alaska Avenue.
The other thing to Bonnie's point is that we'd have to really check into whether permeable pavers or porous pavement is even suitable for this site, just because the wetlands are so close, the soils may not.
Yeah, supported, yeah.
Wow.
Mr. Quill, if he can speak.
Well, yeah, bring him up.
I was, I thought he was only going to do fifty.
Okay, so here's, Rick, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me? Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your consideration tonight. I don't think, and I'm pretty sure I know, that some of this conversation you're having amongst yourself is going sideways. Anne Marie has a more handle on it, but let me just, let me just step back. We've been working on this project for five years. We had come to the town in the initial stages to talk about developing this whole part, to pave the street and contributing to it. Subsequently, we had a wetland delineation, and Ms. Osler would know. I think she was on the panel for the plan, for Paper Streets. And in the wetland delineation, we discovered about forty feet or so up Alaska Avenue. Wetlands started to intrude and snaked its way back to the corner of this property. In your minutes on paving streets or making them open space, you made a lot of the streets open space because of wetlands intrusion or total flooding. So the fact of the matter is, is we're not asking to pave the whole street. From our understanding, there's a fifty-foot right of way up Alaska Avenue. One time it went entirely up to the end of our property around the B and B and the two dips. You subsequently gave twenty-two acres of open space, of city land to open space. The Del Dot specifically, in both our applications and plus reviews, had asked to go off Alaska Avenue. Technically, and maybe Mr. Mandels could address this, there are two lots, Lot one eighty-nine and Lot one ninety. You cannot deny access to either of those lots. If we sold one of those lots, we would still be required, if we sold Lot one ninety and developed Lot one eighty-nine that goes up two hundred seven linear feet up Alaska Avenue, this would be, this would be a mute issue. We could technically have two entrances. There's no way you can not deny us entrance on deed at lots. So my concern here is when Mr. Morgan says, why should we pay for it? Well, Mr. Morgan, can I remind you about Tennessee Avenue? Can I remind you, because you were on the panel, when it was discussed about developing Tennessee Avenue, our lots, not your lots, sir, citizens' lots. And you were discussing what should be done with that. And Fred Buffet, if I recall, said, well, what about the property owners up there? Shouldn't they contribute this? About eighty or ninety thousand dollars? And it was, and it was discussed, and you guys could pull the minutes. No. So what happens?
Can I respond to that? May I reply?
No, 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 let me talk, and then you can respond, sir. Let me speak. I go to dinner the other night up Harbor House. And I park at the canal front park and I walk up the street. What a magnificent city we have here. What a magnificent city. I asked for an FOA, how much of the city spends on the city side as compared to the beach side? I'm going to guess that it's pennies on the dollars you spent on the beach side of town. I'm going to guess, sir, that when we talk about improvements on this side, about the beach side of town, when I hear a conversation on Friday, when you talk about repairing beach lights on the parking lot and you want to skinny them up or go down because you don't think it's worth it, and you, sir, say, why do we even need lights? No, no, you listen to me.
Mayor, are we, are we required to listen to?
I think we need to back on track.
Rick, we. No, but the point of it is, is this street is only asked to, it's not asked to go all two hundred seven linear feet. It's answered forty, forty linear feet. When your engineer says wetlands, he's correct. If you, if you have to apply for den wreck or army corpse engineer or whatever the process is, if you pave over wetlands, you have to, you have to go through a petition and you have to replace it. We're not asking to go on the wetlands. Now, there is an issue which Anne Marie has identified. And sadly, it is that the one lot that sits off there, that has another lot, fifty feet, we have two hundred seven linear feet. The houses across has fifty feet and a hundred feet. The house, immediately on the corner of Alaska Avenue and Cape Pen Lope would be accessed. I honestly don't know what you do with the other house, because we didn't have a wetland delineation done on that, but I suspect that that entire property is in the wetland, is all on wetlands. But I don't know how you resolve that. We're asking to beautify the part of the city for the city to contribute to that. And if we, and if we put Tennessee Avenue in comparison of a ninety thousand, two hundred and some linear feet, I don't know what the cost would be. It would be more, but according to your, and it's going to be discussed this Thursday night, according to your new amended ordinance, you guys are going to have to address a lot of issues. And I encourage everybody out there who's listening to this right now to attend that meetings, because there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of issues brought up. But in that context, if you guys are concerned about the stormwater management, you only have one choice and one choice alone. Any future expenditures on Lewis Beach side of town is to apply any services with porous material, period. So if anybody wants to ask me a question, ask me a question, but don't opine if you don't know all the answers. Ask questions.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Rob, do you want to respond at all? Do you have any comment, Rob, you want to make?
I was only going to point out that, of course, the city paved Tennessee Avenue to increase the value of the lots it was trying to sell for the benefit of the citizens of the city. Mr. Quill is asking us to pave it for his benefit.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have this request from Mr. Quill. We've heard from Mr. Quill. Is there any action you want to take here this evening?
I'd like to suggest two things.
Okay.
I'd like to know, I'd like to have a much better handle on exactly what is being requested here in terms of, you know, how far down Alaska, Mr. Quill is asking the city to foot the bill first. Second, what it would cost and what are the engineering issues here? Because, you know, we've identified a bunch of them. And third, I would suggest that Anne Marie make a call to Connie Holland's office, because as she said, plus comments are not binding. So that we make sure that this really is Del Dot's, you know, bottom line on all of this. Because this is a, this is a very difficult way to, I'm just looking at the layout now, the five lots, and it's a very difficult way to access this parcel.
Right. It is a very difficult one.
I'd like to have a lot more assurance that Del Dot is, is, is insistent on this point. So that we really, because I really don't fully, I don't, I don't have a good sense of all the moving pieces here in terms of cost and engineering and all the rest of it.
I think we need a lot more information. I agree with you, Bonnie. I think having Charlie look at this in terms of what might be feasible over there, even a preliminary look at it. Charlie, could you do that? You're muted, but can you? What, what could you do to give us a better idea of what we're looking at over there?
And I have one other question. The wetland delineation that was done when we were examining the paper streets, that was, what, three years ago now?
Or.
If, for, if Mr. Quill has a more recent delineation, that would be helpful to see as well.
Okay. Charlie, you want to comment?
Well, I agree with Bonnie that we would need to know what the actual request is, because I heard Mr. Quill say that maybe he doesn't want the whole thing paved, but I'd like to have some idea of what, what the request is. It seems like that if you don't pave the whole thing, you're not really addressing the second house down the line. But, so that's one thing, but, you know, to really give council the answers that they need, we would need to do the right-of-way survey. We would need to get the wetlands delineated. Maybe that information's out there, but it would take that, that's the kind of information I would need to have before I can really comment on a path forward with a street. I'm not saying it's impossible to put a street in there, but I just, I wouldn't want to comment on what, what that would look like or the cost of it until I have some more information.
Okay. All right.
So the other thing, just another thing to consider is that there is sewer through there. So that, and that's something that, it's old, old sewer that might need to be replaced as part of any project, just to keep that in the back of your mind.
It may also be too small of a line to accommodate, you know, the houses that are proposed.
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty good because it's at a greater than standard slope, so it's got some capacity to it. But if down Cape Pen Lope and Drive, because all the flow all the way to the state park ends up going through that pipe, if there's some development down that way, then it begins to get a little undersized, but it's probably a little way out.
Right, okay. Charlie, did you describe that sewer line? Is that in that right of way of Alaska Avenue?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
And there's water as well.
There were in water.
Okay, thank you.
I would imagine that both of those are pretty old. We would need a read from BBW as to what they think that what condition the pipe is in and what it's made of. It may be, who knows, in terms of, it may be cast iron, it may be terracotta. I don't know. In terms of the sewer line, it may be something else in terms of waterline.
Okay.
That information may be available from the Board of Public Works, readily. I don't know.
I have that information, Mayor.
Do you? Good.
In terms of the sewer, I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank of whether it's terracotta clay or cast iron plate, but I think it's clay, actually.
Okay.
Bonnie, did you have a motion in mind?
Uh, no. I mean, Ted, Ted asked if we wanted to take any action tonight and all I. I mean, Ted, Ted asked if we wanted to take any action tonight, and all I said was, these are questions that I think are on everyone's mind. I I don't know, I don't know what, I guess it would, if it was a motion, be to table it pending additional information. I I don't know.
I mean, I have the main, the main question I have is similar to yours, which is that this is Del Dot's bottom line, that this is the only way that the, anyone could enter this property now or in the future. How can the property be developed otherwise? I mean, I get that it's Mr. Quill's the developer in this case, but we have some responsibility, if there is a street there, to to have maintained that and to make it an attractive place to to develop, I mean.
Well, Janelle and I can certainly follow up with Del Dot.
Yeah.
And and that's simple. And and if, and then if Charlie can, i- if Charlie can look at at some of the kind of preliminary data we have, I don't want to get into the hard engineering. But, you know, look at a current wetland delineation and, and, you know, other, other things. I can work with Charlie to figure out what he would look at, to to just get a sense of what's even possible.
Yeah, Rick says here in his, in his last note that he, that BPW has weighed in regarding what the water and sewer lines are. So he said, ask Darren. So it Charlie indicates he has some information, so maybe we need to follow up with BPW and learn a little bit more about what we can there.
All right. And you haven't heard anything positively or negatively from the other homes?
No.
I'm aware of.
They're not.
Jason, Alaska.
It's, they're, they're both season, out of state owners.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right, so can we maybe get that information in time for our April meeting? Anne Marie? Okay, so we'll put this back on for possible future consideration in April. Okay. Won't take, unless somebody wants to make a motion tonight. I think we need more information before we're prepared to do anything.
I agree.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Quill, thank you for being here. All right, any other, we are at the end of the agenda. Thank you all for being here. Is there any other business that anyone needs to bring forward this evening or wishes to bring forward?
So Mayor, I, I do want to clarify something because I had a pretty, I had a, well, a typo, but it's a numeric typo. And and what I had sent to all of you, I had said that we could introduce the, and set the public hearing for the issue of building height limit at the meeting on March sixteenth. It's actually March fifteenth. So.
That's what I was, that's why I was referring to Tuesday.
Right, you referred to Tuesday, and then it, it occurred to me, oh, my gosh, I said the sixteenth. So, so the idea is that on the next Monday at six, you all will convene and you will discuss, or you, you'll deal with the budget and set that public hearing. And then Parks and Rec Commission meets at six thirty, so hopefully we can.
Oh, we should wrap up the discussion this Friday on the budget. And with those, with just approving the budget and at setting a public hearing, we should be able to handle that within the time allotted, so. Anything else that anyone wants to bring forward before we consider adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Rob. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night.